Hammond Council, November sixteenth, twenty twenty to order. I'll rise for the pledge.
To the republic which is stand.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with great justice and.
Have a moment of silence. Thank you. Just reminding everyone in the audience, this is a special meeting of the Hammond Common Council, and I refer you to the agenda where we will have the pledge, the roll call, the public hearing, and then the consideration, and then we will adjourn. So if you want to speak, speak during the public hearing. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, nine present, zero absent, three in person, six by Zoom. Clerk Golick, the public hearing.
The public hearing, ordinance number twenty dash twenty-five, sponsors by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending the schedule of rates and charges for water services furnished by the Hammond Water Works Department.
Mayor.
Mr. President.
Good evening, Mayor.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Do you mind if I make an opening statement about the ordinance?
Now, this is a public hearing. Pardon me? Did we have to have the public hearing before we introduce it? Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. It's good to see you all again. This is the second time we're doing a public hearing on the water rate increase because the first hearing was not properly noticed, and we wanted to make sure we did this the right way. So I would like to remind the council that the last time the city of Hammond raised water rates on any resident was in nineteen eighty-five. Since nineteen eighty-five, it's been set at forty-four cents for a thousand gallons, which is the lowest water rate in the state of Indiana. Number one lowest, I dare say the lowest in the United States, but I haven't done my research, and I can't say that. But it's the lowest in Indiana by a long shot. We had the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission conduct a study on the city Hammond's water department a couple of years back, and they determined then it cost Hammond a dollar eleven per thousand gallons, the Hammond Water Company, to make a thousand gallons of water. Since that time, it's gone up closer to a dollar twenty. So knowing that we only charge our residents forty-four cents for a thousand gallons, and the I U R C, which is an independent regulatory committee, says it costs us closer to a dollar twenty to make a thousand gallons, we're losing close to eighty cents, which is two-thirds of what we're charging for every one thousand gallons we make. A lot of people confuse the Hammond Water Company with the city Hammond, and I'm here to set it straight. The city Hammond and the Hammond Water Utility are completely separate. This rate increase is for the Hammond Water Utility. It's for infrastructure improvements to the Hammond Water Utility. So if we do infrastructure improvements below street, this is the money that we use to repair the water lines. If we need to do infrastructure improvements to our filtration plant, which is worth hundreds of millions of dollars, this is where the money would come from. If we have to do improvements to our water towers around the city Hammond, in fact, because we're picking up new customers in Illinois, we're going to have to pay for another water tower in the near-term future, this is where the money would come from. Right now, the water tower being repaired on Columbia Avenue is being financed by the city Hammond. Why? Because the water utility didn't have three and a half million dollars to do the repair. And we needed to do the repair because the water tank was rusting before our eyes, but we couldn't do it because the water utility doesn't have enough money. So the city Hammond stepped forward, and we financed that project, and we're completing it right now, the city Hammond. It's not supposed to work that way. These repairs are supposed to be done by the water utility. This rate increase will allow the water utility to use funds for capital improvements to the filtration plant and the distribution system that are badly needed. I'd like to point out, we have a lot of customer communities in our audience, and we'll be speaking, they'll be coming up, and they'll be protesting, and I'm not upset that they're here, and I don't think they're showing that they're upset by being here. They're doing their jobs. I agree with that. When you look at what this is going to cost, my house, an average Hammond house, you're going to hear testimony that the average Hammond resident uses three thousand five hundred gallons a month. The average Hammond resident using three thousand five hundred gallons a month is going to see an increase in their bill of about six or seven dollars a month, which is, you know, I realize nobody wants to pay extra, and I realize that there's people out there, they can't afford another six or seven dollars a month, and I feel horrible for them. However, we can't keep on financing our utility the way we're doing right now. However, when you hear the customer communities come in here, the bill is a lot different for them, and I think we have to approach this smartly with our customers, because they're our customers, and we like our customers. When you're talking about communities like Whiting, like Dyer, like Highland, like Munster, like Griffith, it's not six dollars a month or seven dollars a month for an individual house, you're talking about a big bill that that community is going to owe to the Hammond Water Utility. So the question's going to become, if we pass this rate increase, are we going to work with our customers to try to bring them in and possibly avoid litigation? That's the next step. Okay? However, I'd like to point out that for the average Hammond resident, we're talking about six to ten dollars a month. And, you know, I realize that that's a lot of money to some people, but this is something that's badly needed. We've needed to do it since nineteen eighty-five, and we have a proposal pending for the Hammond Council now. I have facts and figures from every community, and I'm just going to save the facts and figures for each community for when they come up and speak, and when they come up and speak, I'm going to follow them up, and I'm going to point out, we're talking about millions of dollars here. And I want to make sure that we understand that we're talking about millions of dollars here. And obviously, you know, if our customer communities are using millions of dollars to repair their infrastructure, and they are, and we are not improving our infrastructure here in Hammond, if Hammond has a major malfunction with our infrastructure, let's say the filtration plant is inoperable, that's no good for anybody in this room. That's no good for anybody that relies on water, which is all of us. That's no good for Highland, Dyer, Griffith, Whiting, Munster, it's no good for anybody. So I think everybody could agree, Hammond needs to do more infrastructure work, and the only way to do that is to raise rates so that we can make more money in the water utility to do that, because Whiting doesn't want us to go out either, just like we don't want Whiting to go out. So anyway, I think I want to finish off and point out one more thing. We have contracts with our customer communities, because quite frankly, there's more people from customer communities in City Hall right now, people at home can't appreciate that. There's more people from our customer communities in City Hall right now than Hammond residents, because it's six or seven dollars for the average Hammond resident, and it could be millions of dollars for some of the communities sitting in here. So if I was representing Dyer or Munster, I would be here too, and I think it's right that they are here. I just want to point this out. We have contracts with these communities that we are going to follow to the word. We're not planning on cutting anybody off, we're not planning on magically inserting language, we're going to follow our contracts. And maybe we could work with our customer communities to prevent litigation from happening, but this is not a threat. This is us working with the Hammond Council right now, and it pertains to our customer communities because their rate is pegged to what our Hammond residents pay. So if we raise the rate on Hammond residents, language automatically triggers in our customer communities' contracts, and that's why they're here. And they're concerned, and I don't blame them, I'd be concerned if I was in their shoes too. I just want the Hammond Council to know, we realize that there is some consternation with our customer communities, and we're dealing with that right now. I think for us, we need to focus on what rate are we going to charge the Hammond residents. And then the fallout with our customer communities, I promise you, I will work real hard with our customer communities to try to smooth this all out so that we don't all end up in federal court suing each other. It'd be nice if we could work like neighbors. That's what we're trying to do. I've had great conversations already with the town of Munster. I've got meetings coming up with representatives in other communities as well, including Whiting, actually, this week. So I'm going to go ahead and relinquish now, Mr. President, and I do reserve the right to come up and point out, when a customer community testifies, what numbers are, how much we're talking about. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And just want to remind everybody in the audience, you all get a chance who want to speak, you don't have to sign in for this, so just be patient, and we'll get to you.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Good evening. How are you?
Shawna Levinson, I'm the attorney for the Hammond Water Works Department. Thank you for letting me address you. I just wanted to reiterate, like the mayor said, how important this rate increase is to continue safe and effective treatment and distribution of water for the Hammond Water Works Department. As you know, the independent rate study that was performed showed that we needed to increase our flow rate to two dollars and thirty cents in order to provide successful maintenance and operation of the water department, two dollars and thirty cents. We're asking that you accept the proposed incremental increases that are in the ordinance twenty twenty-five to give users an opportunity to adjust to this change. Just a reminder, as the mayor pointed out, that the average Hammond user is about thirty five hundred gallons per month. That means that their average flow rate water bill right now is a dollar sixty-one. When the rates go up to a dollar ninety, if the council approves the same, that flow rate will go from a dollar sixty-one to six dollars and sixty-five cents. Even at the full amount of the two dollars and thirty that would happen in two thousand twenty-four in accordance with this ordinance, the flow rate would be, on the average consumer in Hammond, eight dollars and five cents. So it would go from a dollar ninety to eight dollars and five cents. I remind you again, these rates have not increased since nineteen eighty-five, this is long overdue. You will hear from our CEO, Mark McLaughlin, who will tell you, and Jaime, who will say the infrastructure is in desperate need of routine maintenance, some improvements, in order to keep the water flowing to Hammond residents and beyond. And I too would like to point out that our neighboring communities will come before you and argue that this rate increase is too substantial for them, but our rate increase is still way less than the markup that most of them charge their consumers. Their rates range from, I'm not certain on Highland, but anywhere from three dollars and two cents to three dollars and thirteen cents per thousand, and we're only charging them our base rate that Hammond residents charge now. And they're not treating the water. They don't have nearly the infrastructure that we have and that we need to keep maintenance on. I also wanted to assure the council that there was, in fact, proper notice for this hearing pursuant to Indiana code. Notice of the hearing was mailed to all of the customers that it is, the statute requires, and it was published on both October thirtieth and November sixth. The clerk has confirmation of that and proof of publication. I also have it with me. If you wish for me to submit that to you all tonight, I'm happy to do so. One last thing is that I would ask, and we would ask, that based on current case law that represents that these rates are not subject to routine increases, absent the passage of a new ordinance, we do ask the council to modify its ordinance by striking the very last component, which is a three percent increase beyond two thousand twenty-four. So you have the ability tonight to pass this ordinance as amended, and we would ask that you do, in fact, pass the ordinance as amended to strike the three percent increases beyond two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. Robert Tweedle, on behalf of the town of Highland. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am here to object on behalf of Highland to proposed ordinance twenty dash twenty-five. We feel that the proposed rates are discriminatory, unreasonable, and unjust under Indiana law. Moreover, notwithstanding the proposed modification to the ordinance as before you this evening, if it's taken up as it's currently written, the automatic rate increase that is contained in the ordinance is illegal. Moreover, the Hammond Common Council and the Hammond Water Works Department lack the authority to approve the proposed rates pursuant to our agreement with Hammond. And finally, we do believe that Hammond's notice for the hearing this evening is defective. In addition to my oral objections, I also would like to tender to this body a written remonstrance, and I would like the record to reflect that. Kevin, I don't know if I can just give this to you? And that concludes our objection. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Tweedle?
Yes.
What do you charge per thousand in Highland?
Dollar sixty-one.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Tweedle. It's not entirely accurate what he answered, though. They charge in Highland, keep in mind now, in Highland, we sell them water, let's just call it fifty cents, it's like forty-eight cents per a thousand gallons, okay? Highland charges all their residents eleven dollars and fifty cents a month just to hook up to the system, and then they charge you a dollar sixty-one for each thousand gallons. So in the town of Highland, if they bought a thousand, let's just say the regular Highland resident buys a thousand gallons of water, which is ridiculous. Anybody that lives in the house is using five times the amount, let's just say that, though. Highland paid fifty cents for a thousand gallons of water from Hammond, and they charge our residents thirteen dollars and eleven cents, which is fourteen-hundred percent markup? We also know how much water Highland uses every year. They use one hundred and four million gallons a month. Based on that, they spend five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year to the Hammond Water Department, five hundred and sixty-two thousand gallons a year, and they sell that water to their residents for a net gain of four point two million dollars in Highland. To call our rates unfair, unjust, and discriminatory is ridiculous, Mr. Tweedle. No offense. You're charging your residents five times what Hammond residents will pay if the rate increase happens. So net four point two million dollars a year. I'd be up here arguing on behalf of the town of Highland if I was their attorney also. So.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is George Smith. I'm currently serving as the president of the Highland Water Board. I respectfully disagree with the mayor. I read the report for the state, which does, in fact, indicate that the Hammond rates are the lowest in the state. I also read the report that you commissioned, and there certainly does appear as though a rate increase may be warranted for the city of Hammond. I'm going to tell you that the dollar sixty-one that we charge is what we charge. Just like Hammond, there's an administrative cost. Just like Hammond, there's other costs that we put on our bill, the sewer cost, the hydrant cost, all those things go out in a single bill. But the water is, in fact, one dollar and sixty-one cents per one thousand. The current rate increase does not contemplate the non-residential customer. The current rate increase does not contemplate, even in Hammond, your industrial base, it does not contemplate your commercial base, and so I would have to tell you that, based on reading twenty twenty-five, it's very arbitrary and very capricious. And I would pray that the council would consider an amendment, other than the amendment that your attorney advised, I would consider an amendment that allows Hammond and the Hammond Water Department to negotiate with the customer communities other than residential to allow for some discussion as to what that rate might be. So in effect, I do have to defer to your mayor, but also, at the same time, I have to disagree with your mayor. And I believe that litigation is expensive. Litigation is probably forthcoming without such an amendment and without such a resolution. So with that, I will bid you, God bless you all, and thank you for allowing me to address this august body.
Mr. Smith, if I may, do you happen to know when you guys rebuilt streets and the water lines go in, who pays for that?
The customer pays for that, but that's in a separate rate structure, and the residential rate structure that you have, according to the mayor, is contemplating all of these things, when in fact, they should be in capital budgets or an improvement fund.
My question is, if somebody was to get their street rebuilt, would it be outside the realm of the possibilities that every homeowner got a two thousand dollar bill for that street being rebuilt?
No. That's outside the realm of possibility.
It is?
Yeah, we would most likely do a bond issue, and we would recover that through the period of the bond.
And that's what my question was, is that when you said the customer pays for that water line?
Yes, the customer pays for everything, just like when you go to Walmart. You pay for the clerk, and you pay for the back room, and you pay for everything. So yes. But to say that our rate is fourteen-hundred percent, well, the bill may be, but our rate is not. We do have to consider, just like you, you have to consider the administrative costs, and just like you, you have to consider capital costs and improvement costs, so. But I'm not disagreeing that some type of residential rate increase for the city of Hammond residential customers looks to me like it's probably warranted, but this particular ordinance leaves no room to negotiate with your neighbor communities as to what the proper rate should be. So my suggestion is I would consider an amendment that would allow such negotiation to take place without litigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just, this is facts. Hammond charges three dollars a month to hook into our system for a typical resident. Highland charges eleven fifty per month for overhead and stuff like that. I dare say we probably have a lot more overhead, since we have a filtration plant, twenty-four seven staff that has to manage that plant, we're responsible for all the maintenance and all the chemicals and all the electricity and all the repairs and everything that goes into the system. Highland charges four times what Hammond charges just to hook up to the system, and then we charge forty-six cents for a thousand gallons, and Highland charges our residents a dollar sixty-one for a thousand gallons, which is also four times what a Hammond resident pays. So I don't dispute what the gentleman's saying, I appreciate his concern, but the fact is, you know, we're doing all the work, and then our communities are buying our cheap water, marketing it up thousands of percents, making millions of dollars. So anyway, thank you.
My name is David Wickland, and I'm here representing the town of Munster. The town of Munster currently, this proposal, this proposed rate would result in a four hundred and forty-third percent increase to the current rate, effective in only sixty-seven days. Within the town of Munster, this represents nearly two million dollars in additional cost per year. I'd like to, in addition to my oral comments, submit a written remonstrance. If the appropriate rate for the safe and responsible management of the utility is indeed actually this high, certainly there must be a way to meet this obligation over time with more gradual increases. That's primarily what we're looking at, the shock of the increase, all in one fell swoop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wickland?
Yes.
And what does Munster charge per thousand gallons?
I agree with Mr. Wickland, quite frankly. We had a meeting, I'd like to point out, I met with Mr. Wickland and the town manager of Munster. I think it was a very productive meeting, and I quite frankly, agree with what he's saying, that to hit a community, our customers, with such a big bill, probably when most have already done their budgeting, is not fair. And I started off saying that to the council, that I think we need to be respectful of our neighbors in this regard. I think right now, we're dealing with what rate are we going to charge Hammond residents. The reason we have our customers in here is their contracts are geared towards what our residents pay. So if we raise the rates Hammond residents pays, it affects every community in here. That's why they're here protesting, and I appreciate that. Munster charges nine dollars and twenty-nine cents to hook up to the system, and then they charge our residents three dollars and thirteen cents for a thousand gallons. For a thousand gallons, it costs a Munster resident twelve dollars and forty cents for something that costs fifty cents to the town of Munster, six hundred percent markup. That's a, Munster uses one hundred and six million gallons of water per month, they spend five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year to the Hammond Water Utility, and Munster nets for the town of Munster for infrastructure improvements, five point seven million dollars a year. I agree with Mr. Wickland's statement, though, and this is something I plan to do. I want to meet with each of our customer communities if the Hammond Council raises the rates. I want to meet with our customer communities and try to come up with a resolution to avoid litigation. If we do go to court, I feel strongly that this will be just like the Chicago Heights case. If I need to remind you, a very similar thing happened between us and Chicago Heights. Chicago Heights sued the city of Hammond in federal court, and the judge read the contract and said, you're charging your residents way more than what Hammond's charging you. How is that an unreasonable price? If it's a dollar ninety, how is it unreasonable for Hammond to charge Munster a dollar ninety when they're charging their residents way more than that every month already? They know it's not an unreasonable price. They don't like the fact that it's hitting them now. I get that. It's not fair, and that's something we need to work out, the council and the mayor. If you give me that power, I will work that out. But I agree with Mr. Wickland, and I agree with most of the people that are going to say, this is not fair, you're hitting us all at once. I get that. I get that. So thank you, Mr. Wickland.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sherry Bradke McNeil, on behalf of the town of Griffith. I'm just here for the record to join in the arguments of Attorney Tweedle with the town of Highland, and I also agree with Attorney Wickland's statements, and I also have a written remonstrance that I will be tendering at this time. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, and what do you charge?
Sherry Bradke McNeil, I'll defer, I'm sure he has the exact numbers.
And what do you charge per thousand gallons?
I got it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. We sell, town of Griffith, thousand gallons, cost them fifty cents. They sell to their residents for thirteen dollars and eighty cents. It's ten dollars and five cents to hook up to the system, plus three dollars and seventy-eight cents per thousand gallons. Keep in mind, Hammond charges three dollars a month to hook up to the system and forty-six cents, okay? Town of Griffith uses forty-two million gallons a month, they spend two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year to the Hammond Water Utility, netting two point seven million dollars a year. Interesting also about the town of Griffith, they do not have a valid contract right now. We're operating month to month, basically, which is unprecedented. We're operating month to month with them. There's literally no protection for the town of Griffith. So when this is all over with, if Griffith still wants to be a customer of Hammond Water, we need to come up with new deals with the town of Griffith. They're in a special situation that our other customer communities are not in. So I think we've been actually very good with our customer community in this case, because quite frankly, Griffith hasn't had a contract for all of twenty twenty, and we're still supplying them water at ridiculously low rates. So, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jaime Prieto, I'm the deputy chief executive operator of Hammond Water Department. I've been at Water Department now for about two months. I've been with the city collectively a little bit over sixteen years in different departments. I do want to bring up and hope for your consideration of the water rate increase, especially for improvements, and specifically for improvements. During these last couple of months at Water Department, I've been, my objective is to be out on the field, see what these guys do. So I'm not in an office, I'm in the truck with the guys, I'm shoveling dirt, I'm changing valves, I'm helping with our infrastructure that no one ever thinks about until you are actually hands-deep in it, and I never thought about even working for the city for sixteen years prior. I hope you do take into consideration, because we definitely need this extra revenue. A little bit of trivia for you guys. How old do you think the oldest running pipe that is still in existence and still in use is? Anyone?
Hundred years.
Eighteen ninety, and it's still used, it's still operational? We don't know how long we're going to have with that. And not only is it just a regular ten, twelve-inch pipe, this is what's called a transmission line, that not only feeds the city of Hammond and its residents, but all the other towns that are represented here. So this is something that is deeply needed. The other day, I was just in Hezville, riding around and looking at just the different hydrants, right? A lot of different hydrants. Some of them are clearly marked nineteen forty-three, a hydrant that's still operational since nineteen forty-three. Guess what? If that hydrant goes, if there's a fire, we don't know if those mechanisms are going to be working properly. We hope so, we test the pressure, and that's why when you see a lot of our water department flushing systems and hydrants twice a year, we make sure that they're operational for that purpose. So thank you for letting everyone here speak, for myself, and any questions?
Yes, Jaime?
Yes.
This pipe that's eighteen ninety?
Mm-hmm.
What happened? What happens if that failed?
I think you can imagine what could happen, and it's not a good thing. And it's not only for the residents, it's for every city that we feed.
So it becomes a safety issue?
Absolutely.
A health issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I may have a question. Is there an anticipation of what schedule?
Councilman Tyler, can you speak up just a hair?
Sorry, is that better? Can you guys hear me?
That's better.
Is there a scheduled, or like an anticipation of what maintenance will be done over the next few years if this ordinance passes and if you all do receive this additional revenue?
Yes, absolutely. We've been working with our superintendent in distribution, as well as Mark, the CEO, as far as getting a capital improvement plan, things that are really needed, you know, as soon as possible, and working from there on out. So we are working on a plan. We do have, and the superintendent did have, a plan laid out with different projects that are definitely needed, but we are working on getting more on there as well.
Okay, is it possible if we, as a city council, could get a copy of that schedule, too?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jaime.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is John Haynes. I'm the clerk treasurer of the City of Whiting, and I'm here to just talk about a lot of numbers. It's going to take me a little time here. But just so mayor doesn't have to come up and indicate how much we pay for a thousand gallons, we pay, our customers pay three dollars and two cents, period, per thousand. We don't have hookup charges. We don't have any of that other stuff. So let me get started. I was here last time, and I just talked to you a little bit about what this would do to the City of Whiting if we had to pay a dollar ninety per thousand gallons. And I talked to you and indicated what our 2019 bottom line was. It was thirty thousand dollars. So we don't make a lot of money on the water that we purchase from Hammond. And just to set the record straight, I think the mayor said we had an eleven-hundred percent markup. We don't have eleven-hundred percent markup. Our gross margin is seventy-five percent. I'm here...let me give you a little bit about my background, all right? I was the former director of audit for a large corporation in Chicagoland area. I was there for thirty-three and a half years. I have an accounting degree, a BS accounting degree from Indiana University, Kelly School of Business. I'm also a certified fraud examiner. I'm here to not only advocate for the City of Whiting, but all the other communities, even the Hammond residents, and even the City of Hammond. I received that report that was done by your financial advisors. And I'd like to share a few facts based on that report. As with all good auditors who review financial information, there are some principles that apply to that review: consistency, accuracy, materiality, and of course, reasonableness. Before I begin my little spiel on the financials, remember this number, twenty-five-point-five million dollars. It's a big number. I have the final rate report that you hopefully all received. I've looked at that report. I hope the council had questions when they looked at that report, reviewed that report. I don't know if you talked to your financial advisor, but hopefully you had a lot of questions because I have a lot of questions. I'm not here to say that you don't need a rate increase. I know you need a rate increase. But if you increase that rate and the City of Whiting has to pay a dollar ninety, two-ten, two-thirty, it's going to be devastating for our customers. And I know the mayor has just indicated that he'll work with us, and I hope he will. Because when I'm done with my presentation, you'll know what a dollar ninety, two-ten, and two-thirty will mean to a lot of customers. The rate that is proposed in the study has a lot of drawbacks, and I hope you have that in front of you. For one thing, it calculates a pilot, and that's normal. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. Since the utility doesn't pay any property taxes, you do the calculation, okay? The calculation in that schedule had one-point-two million, I'm rounding. That was the calculation. That was the maximum pilot. However, in the study, the city's taking one-point-five million, three-hundred thousand dollars more. But remember in that calculation, we have a thing called circuit breakers, all right? And the city only receives seventy percent of the money that they levy. The rest isn't paid by the taxpayer. So the pilot doesn't take into account that circuit breaker. If you took into account the circuit breaker, the pilot calculation that I came up with would be eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, considerably less than the one-point-two, considerably less than a one-point-five. And remember, that one-point-five is used to come up with a deficit that you need to raise for your Hammond taxpayers. That's an important number, all right? Because when you get down to the seven-point-four million, which is what you say the deficit is in that study, all right, that number is used in the numerator, all right, to calculate your tax rate of two-thirty. But first, let me discuss exhibit H, which is in that study. Because this schedule, along with schedule N, is very important because it drives the The statement of revenue and expenses from operations and maintenance, debt service, debt service, reserve annual requirements, capital improvements, working capital funding requirements, that's all in the expenses, and I agree there. But there's a mathematical error at the bottom to calculate the amount of working capital funds. They divided by three instead of five, which is in the left side of the calculation. And based on that calculation, the working capital is overstated by two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. Both the pilot and the working capital overstatement is approximately nine-hundred-and-one thousand dollars. And remember, that nine-hundred-and-one dollars is part of the seven-point-four million dollars that is the deficit in the calculation. The all-important exhibit N, metered rates, it's on page twenty-one of the study, if you have it in front of you. This calculation should make every Hammond customer upset. This schedule in layman terms is indicating that the Hammond customers are paying for all the revenue deficit. The math is very easy. It's a seven-point-four million in deficit divided by the Hammond customer usage of three-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand in...per thousand gallons. However, when they calculate the two-thirty rate, they only use the Hammond usage, which typically is what you use in one of these studies because usually Hammond's unusual because they sell a lot of water to other customers. A lot of them, it's all metered. If you just did or added the three-point...three-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand gallons per hundred thousand gallons, the rate would drop to a dollar twelve. That's an interesting number. And the reason I say that is because I have a copy of the board meeting of the Hammond Water Works dated June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Quote, "There will be a thirty-to-forty-five-day study with the increase to possibly be a dollar twelve per thousand gallons," end quote. I believe the common council needs an explanation as to where did that number come from. And if you correct the pilot and the working capital error, that rate would jump down to ninety-eight-point-eight cents per thousand gallons. So what I'm saying is, it would be nice if you use the Indiana customers' usage also since their usage is more than the Hammond customers' usage. At least your Hammond customer usage, or payers, would only pay ninety-eight cents. And if we had to pay ninety-eight cents, so be it. There's an exhibit in there that's very interesting. It's called exhibit F, page nine of the report. You can calculate each community's rate per thousand gallons. Pretty simple calculation. Again, it's just division. But what's all alarming to me, when I saw that exhibit, is there's two Illinois communities in Illinois that use pretty much almost what we use, it's a little bit less. They are paying seventeen percent of what we pay. Illinois customers paying seventeen percent of what the City of Whiting pays. You can also see on that schedule that the City of Hammond retains seven-point-two million dollars of the eight-point-six million paid by Chicago Heights. And that's because of their contract. Hammond, the City of Hammond has a contract with the Hammond Water Works in which the City of Hammond pays forty-six cents per thousand gallons, plus there's another charge for some infrastructure improvements that they had to make so that they could send water to Chicago Heights. Here is one of the most important things that the council should understand. There is typically collateral damage. When you change one thing, something else happens. In this case, the City of Hammond has a contract with Chicago Heights, and in that contract it says that the City of Hammond will pay the Hammond Water Works whatever the residents are paying. So instead of paying fifty, I think it's fifty-one-point-four cents now, maybe it's fifty-two-point-four, I might be off a penny. Hammond, the City of Hammond is going to have to pay the Hammond Water Works Department a dollar ninety, two-ten, and two-thirty if they don't change the contract. And of that seven-point-two million that you retain, it's going to drop to three-point-seven and twenty-one, four million and twenty-two, and four-point-five million and twenty-three, based on the current usage by Chicago Heights. And I'm not sure if you're aware of that, mayor, and you might be. And so I'm sure you're going to be renegotiating with the Hammond Works Department on that Just keep in mind, if you pass this ordinance, your Hammond customers are paying the entire deficit based on this study. Also, the Indiana customers, based on their two-thousand build usage, will pay seven-point-seven million to the Water Works Department from one-point-seven million that they paid in two thousand and nineteen, six-million-dollar increase. This is on top of the seven-point-four million, or approximately five-point-nine million more, that your Hammond customers will pay. In addition, based on the city's contract with the Hammond Water Parks, or Water Works Department, you will pay an additional four-point-four million. In the end, the Hammond Water Works increased revenue in two thousand and twenty-three will be sixteen-point-three million to fund a deficit of seven-point-four, a surplus of eight-point-nine million in two thousand and twenty-three. The surplus for both twenty-one and twenty-two is estimated at sixteen-point-six million. If you add the twenty-one, the twenty-two, and the twenty-three surplus, it's twenty-five-point-five million dollars over the three years. That's if we have to pay the same rate as the Hammond customers. So I would ask the common council not to take any action tonight, but to digest what you have heard tonight from everyone. I believe that the Hammond taxpayers and the Indiana communities deserve answers to the study. I graciously thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight and for your valuable And I was handed this by our attorney, and this is a letter that we want to make part of the record, the same as all the other communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I didn't go to Kelly School, and I'm not an accountant. I went to Notre Dame, and I'm a lawyer. However, I do know two simple numbers. We sell Whiting water for fifty cents, and they charge our residents three dollars and two cents. Simple math, I don't know, five-hundred percent markup? I apologize when I said over a thousand last meeting, I was wrong. I know that Whiting also buys three-hundred-and-twenty-four million gallons of water a year, and at fifty cents per thousand gallons, they pay the Hammond Water Company a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars a year, and at three dollars and two cents, which is what they charge their residents, they make eight-hundred-and-sixteen thousand a year for six-hundred-plus thousand dollars in net profit. I don't know about a lot of the numbers the clerk threw at us. I appreciate, he's a very smart man, I appreciate he's an auditor, and I appreciate that he cares so much about Hammond residents. I do want to remind the council that we have contracts with these communities we intend to follow through with, and if we could slow down the contracts in an effort to avoid litigation, we will. If we can't, if we have to go to court, I'll tell you what happened in Chicago Heights. The judge read the contract and said, "You charge your residents..." And Whiting's case? The judge read the contract and said, "You charge your residents," in Whiting's case, "$3.02, and Hammond wants to charge you $1.90, and you say $1.90 is unreasonable." That's what happened in Chicago Heights, and we won. And it was not fun, and there was probably a few years of bad feelings between us and Chicago Heights. And then guess what? Me and Mayor Gonzalez in Chicago Heights moved forward, made a new contract for $2 that he's selling water all around Chicago right now. His residents pay over $4 for 1,000 gallons in Chicago Heights right now. $1.90 for 1,000 gallons in a Chicagoland area is not unreasonable at all. Let me go through what some of our competitors charge. I'm not talking about communities here. I'm talking about, let me see. Let's go down to East Chicago. $18.66 for 5,000 gallons. All right, these are all in 5,000 gallon increments, I apologize. So it'd be $1.84 in East Chicago. Indiana American Water, $5.22 per 1,000. In Crown Point, $8.80 for 1,000 gallons. In Whiting, $3.02 for 1,000 gallons. In Griffith, $3.78 per 1,000 gallons. In Highland, $1.61 for 1,000 gallons. In Munster, $3.13 for 1,000 gallons. Hammond raises it to $1.90, oh my God, the world is going to end. We charge our residents twice that, but you can't move it at all, Hammond. It's ridiculous.
Very good. My name is Tom DiGiulio, I'm the town manager in Dyer, Indiana. Dyer is not a direct customer of Hammond. We get our water through Highland, and we pay, we pay the Highland rate plus a transmission fee. So the increase in the raw, the raw product from Hammond will obviously have a significant increase to Dyer's people. I think it's important to recognize that, well, we talk about 44 or 52 or whatever the penny, whatever the rates are, it's for the raw product to get from the filtration plant to our facility. We then have to have the same kind of infrastructure that you have in the city of Hammond. We don't have the filtration plant, I agree. We have pumping stations, we have storage facilities, we have above-ground, ground storage, and we have miles of, miles of mains. And it's important. We've, we're in the midst of both a rate study for our regular system as well as selling a $10 million bond issue to do multi-generational, system-wide improvements in the water utility. So the bond issue will be paid for by taxes. It replaces a smaller bond issue that will expire at the end of this year and continue on. But it's to pay for new transmission lines and distribution lines as well as a significant hydrant replacement, so we don't have the problem that the superintendent talked about earlier. We have hundreds of hydrants that need repairs, and we're going to take care of that. But we also have other stuff. In our, in our normal rate base, we budget about $1 million a year for local improvements. Now, it may pall by what the city of Hammond deals with in terms of the size of their infrastructure, but for a community our size, $1 million a year in local improvements is significant. And I think the question was asked, what happens in a local, if a local water main is replaced with a street, I think was the example. Dyer has, when I do our capital projects, we, they coined a phrase called "one dig", which means you take everything underground and two of the three, one, two, or three of the utilities are replaced, and above-ground sidewalk to sidewalk is replaced. We do those on a fairly regular basis, and we're, we, we match them up with our Pazer ratings for our street resurfacing, taking the worst streets and going down, and we take a, maybe a street that may be a four or five, but the underground is shot, it gets moved up. So we use that combination of everything. I set a goal for myself when I got there in '16 was to try to eliminate all the Pazer 1 ratings by next year. I'm going to miss it by a year, but I'm going to get it. And in the meantime, we've been replacing significant amounts of water mains, storm sewers, and sanitary lines and built into our rate structures. Our rate structures are a little bit on the high side, but part of that is for circumstances. As I said, we're not a direct customer of Hammond, so we already pay a retail price before we can even put the raw product into the system. So this impact has, is significant to us because it'll be a direct tracker through. Mayor Tom will go through what we charge everybody and everything else. I don't have that information with me. I'll stipulate to the facts, but understand that we, we have customers, and tacking onto the raw product, $1.40, $1.90, whatever it's going to end up being increasing, is going to be significant. This needs to be, I agree with the mayor and what other people have said, we need to sit down and work this out over a period of time. The rates shouldn't have been kept this low since 1985. I know when we were talking about rates some time ago, we were being asked to pay for capital improvements throughout the water utility. I agree that Highland, Dyer, as our share of the water consumption in Dyer, 10%, 10.5%, whatever it was, that's the share of the capital stuff we should pay for. We shouldn't pay for a local water main. That's part of the city's responsibility, not the customer's city's. Anything to do with the distribution system down to the customer cities and the filtration plan should be spread out through all the customers. We've had these discussions back in '13 and '14, and I think it's important. Which, the arrangements you've got with the, with the outside communities is, is a godsend. As Mayor McDermott Sr. told me one time when I was in Munster, to go south and sell water, kind of like "go west, young man." But it's a good thing, and it's provided water. There's no question that lake water is, is the golden goose, and it is the resource, and it's good for the communities to have this stuff. So I too have a letter that Kevin will find reads very similar to the other letters, except for my name, but I'll pass that on to you, and there's enough copies. And we hope that we can work this out. There's no question that all of us want to come to a reasonable solution to this problem, and I think that just needs to have some discussions and, and work through it. So I thank you very much for your time. Hope you get home in time to watch the Bears.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thanks, Mr. Giulio, very much. I want to start off and say how much I love our neighbors. My stepmother lives in Dyer, it's a beautiful neighborhood. She doesn't want to pay more on water, I get it. I also agree that these rates should have been raised a long time ago. Last time we raised them was when Mayor McDermott Sr. was mayor in 1985. And it's something I have to take responsibility for, that we haven't had this discussion up until the 17th year I sat in City Hall. That just shows you how tough the issue is, quite frankly. It's something that we haven't touched, and here we are. But I do want to say I agree with Mr. DiGiulio that they should have been raised a long time ago. I also agree with all of our customer communities that this is not fair to hit our customer communities all at once. And if the Hammond Council does pass this rate increase, my next order of business should be to meet individually with each of our customer communities to try to work out an increase, a ramp up that's acceptable to our customer and acceptable to the Hammond Council. That's my next order of business. And if we're forced to go to court, because it seems to me that some of our communities, customer communities are more militant than others, quite frankly, and if three of or four of them want to settle with us and one wants to sue us, then we'll go to court with the one. But if I could reach agreements that, that says, okay, in year one, we'll ramp up to this, in year two, you'll ramp up to this, year three, you'll ramp up to this, in exchange for this slower pace, you agree to forego litigation against the Hammond Water Company? God bless America, if we could reach that deal. If we can't, once you take action, quite frankly, their contract says they pay what the Hammond resident pays, and you guys are setting the rate of what the Hammond resident pays. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Giulio. It's good to see you, sir.
Hello, Mark McLaughlin with the Hammond Water Department. Wanted to give you a little bit of background on the intent of the rate study. The rate study was done by Sender and Company, one of the most respected financial analysts in northern Indiana. And at the beginning of the rate study was the, we had the option of changing our base rate. That's the $3 a month that we charge you, no matter how much water you use. If you use 10,000 gallons that month or 10 gallons that month, you will still pay that $3. And the initial recommendation was to raise that. I think the next lowest base rate might be $9 or $10 when we're at $3. But it was everyone's feeling that we wanted to protect the, we're, we're a, we have a number of low-income people, we have a number of elderly people in Hammond, and they would have felt that. We, we have a number, like the mayor mentioned, we have 3,500 gallons is the average use in Hammond. We have 24,000 customers, 12,000 use less water, 12,000 of those customers use more water than 3,500. It's the people that use under 3,500 gallons that we were trying to protect, because those people might use 500 gallons a month, it might be a single person at home. And so they'll pay the $3, and instead of changing that to $6 or $8, we kept it at $3, and they'll just pay an additional rate on the amount of additional on water they use. So if they're very frugal with their water use and they stay at 1,000 gallons a month, they'll pay the $3 instead of paying 44 cents for that 1,000 gallons, they'll pay $1.90. It will be a $1.50 increase in that month. And I know, that is, to some people, that's a lot of money, but we do have to run this water department as an ongoing activity. It provides, it's a health and safety issue for everyone. When we didn't have the money to repair the water tower, it frankly alarmed me. And we have 35 years of deferred maintenance. We have, that this rate is going to fund over the next 20 years. So I, that was the reason we kept the rate at three, the base rate at $3. And if you use a lot of water, yes, it's dramatic increase. If you're a 2,000 gallon, 3,000 gallon a month user, it will be the smallest increase we could feasibly arrange and still maintain the water system. We have 400 miles of pipe that averages 85 years old. Just to replace the pipe that is 85 years old in our system, no valves, no pumping stations, no filtration plant, just replacing the pipe would be over $500 million. And but that, and that's money that will have to be spent over the next 30 or 40 years. Should have been, we should have been doing this for the last 35 years. We haven't, there'll be a lot of work to do, but I still believe we have protected our low-income people, our low-water users, the people who are frugal with water will not see much of an increase. Thank you.
Hey, Mark. I have a question. If, I hope you guys can hear me. Mark, can you talk a little bit about the programs that you all have in place to help those residents that, whose water has been shut off throughout the year or who are in risk of being shut off? Just trying to keep an eye on, I know you're saying that we've done our part to protect those residents, but just want to, if we already have a high number of those residents who are, who are being shut off or at risk of being shut off, then any increase would of course attribute to that and increase that number. So just want to make sure that we have the services and support in place to make sure that that doesn't happen.
That's very important to us, and we do, we would like to do more. We have a number of programs in place to deal with that. It's a, and, but we hope to do more to prevent any, we don't want to see anybody ever shut off of water.
Are there any further questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Kevin?
So, really quick, I'm sorry.
You need Mark to talk?
Mark, I know Councilman Tyler was asking what programs, so I, I think a little bit more specifically the actual programs is our curiosity for those residents, because I know we're all being talked to about from different residents regarding this rate increase and then the fact that it's increasing over three years. So what is in place to help exactly?
We work out payment programs. Our first, well, we refer people to different agencies, Catholic Charities, North Township, number of churches. But if all else fails, we always offer a payment program that fits their budget.
Mr. President?
Mayor?
Keep in mind that when people aren't paying their water bill, it has a lot more to do with the sanitation bill and the sanitary district bills and the water. We're talking about the water rate, which is, I want to say it's less than 20% of the entire bill is the portion we pay on water right now. I think it's actually even lower than that. When people, 10%? Thank you. 10% of the entire bill right now, if a typical bill is the water portion, which is the part we're talking about. So if somebody's not paying their water bill, quote unquote, it's not because their water portion of their bill is so high, it's because they're having trouble paying the garbage, they're having trouble paying the sanitary district. It's, and you know, obviously, the water portion of is, is one-third of the bill. But you know, if people are having trouble paying their water bill, I mean, it's, that's a bad situation to be in, obviously. But I mean, you know, you have to pay your bills. We have to pay our bills. I can't call up, you know, our waste haulers and say, "Sorry, we can't pay this month." That just doesn't happen. We have to pay millions of dollars, and we rely on the income stream from our residents to help pay for the sanitary district, the water rate, and for the, and the garbage. But keep in mind, when we're talking about the bill that you're talking about, Councilwoman, it's all three portions. It's not the water portion. The water portion is 10% of the entire bill.
Mayor, Mr. President, first. Mayor, I do understand that it is all-inclusive with everything, and that the water portion is the 10%. But if we already have residents that may be already behind, what is this actually going to do for them in totality, even adding more of a burden on them, especially now, even in the midst of a pandemic?
We all have burdens, Councilwoman, we all do. Owning a house is expensive, you know, hooking up your system to the water utility, sending garbage is expensive. You can't just hide from the fact that there's expenses that we need to cover. You know that as well as anybody, because you look at our budget. I mean, we can't run a city based on, you know, what 1% of the people in the city can't afford. If you run a city like that, bad things will follow. We have to run a city based on what it actually costs to do things and based on maintenance and things of that nature. Councilwoman?
Yes, and I do understand, and I'm not saying we don't need a rate increase, so I don't want you to get me wrong in that. I'm saying, when he mentioned about the different products, the different items that we have, if they're already behind, what is this also going to do for our residents? That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. I appreciate your concern, Councilwoman. Of course, it's very concerning when somebody can't pay their bill and they get the disconnect notice, and usually we get the call, the trustee gets the call, it's a bad situation. I agree. And you know, obviously, in a pandemic, this is not ideal, but you know, here we are.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. You know, in listening to the clerk treasurer from Whiting who is an auditor, it reminds me of why I didn't become an auditor. And that's no offense, because we need auditors. The world needs auditors too, right? But it's, it's pretty dense, you know, when you look at all those numbers, and I think the points that he was making were, were interesting. But I said this last meeting that you really want to make sure you, you put things in context, and I'm going to do that in a second, but I wanted to just at least address a couple things. One, let's remember, part of what the city council is taking a look at tonight is to give the water utility the independence, the financial independence that they have not had for decades. This city and has for, since gaming came into the city's coffers, has underwritten all the water repairs of all those streets. So instead of that money being available to the council and to the city for other things that it could use it for, you name it, whatever each councilperson's issue is, that money could have been used for that. Instead, gaming money has paid for all the water utility improvements. The water utility needs to have financial independence. They need to be able to finance debt to make large improvements. They're not able to do that right now. They couldn't go out and sell a bond because they don't have a stream of income that they need. And... And I think it's important also to point out, the issues that the clerk treasurer from Whiting brought up about pilot and about the agreements that we have with Illinois. The great thing about the city is that we don't have to call Whiting up and say, is it okay to have this agreement regarding the pilot? Is it okay to have this agreement regarding our Illinois water revenue? That is all going to be done internally between the city and the waterworks. And it will be done fairly to the waterworks to allow them to have revenue and fairly to the city to have, for them to have revenue. That's the goal. So let's talk about context real quick. And I don't want to be repetitive of my discussion last time. But it's important that we don't just look at this in the context of what's happening in Lake County, Indiana. Although important, and you can see the various charges that are being charged for, in Lake County, Indiana. From the 44 cents that Hammond charges to the 880 for that same 1,000 gallons that the residents of Crown Point have to deal with. But this is important. I pointed this out last time, but listen to this. Baker and Tilly did an independent rate study of all 368 communities, or I'm sorry, utilities in the state of Indiana. It was done independently, it was done by what's now called AIM, it used to be called IACT. It's a cities and towns organization in the state. At a thousand, for 1,000 gallons, they looked at 368 utilities. Guess who was the least? 44 cents, City Hammond. The most, the maximum, was $22.40 for that same 1,000 gallons. And the average was $6.96, average through the state. That goes for poor communities, that goes for rich communities. That's the average through the state to show you where we are and how far behind we are from where the average in the state of Indiana is. Base charge, that's that $3 that Mark pointed out that is not being raised and not is, and is not suggested to be raised. The base charge in, of the 368 utilities, the lowest, $3. Guess who? Hammond. The maximum charge in the state is $46.32. The average, $18.31. So again, I want to make sure that the council understands the contextual aspect of this through the state is that the city of Hammond will continue to be responsible and continue to be very low as it relates, way below average, by the way, way below average, significantly below average from the other communities throughout the state. Thank you.
Mary Ellen?
Get some laughs on the list. Um, I, I understand, Councilwoman Alexander, you're concerned about people getting their water turned off. I've, I've been there before. When I was eight months pregnant with my youngest daughter, um, the bill wasn't paid. I was not working and the water department come to shut off my water. And I plopped my big pregnant self on top of the pipe and wouldn't let them shut it off. That bill did get paid later that day. The only resources are people that can't pay their water bills, and it is a combined bill. And it's not a small bill either. Salvation Army can possibly help. St. Joe's in downtown Hammond, they do a lot of good things down there. There's the trustees, Greater Hammond might have some resources. And there's also an information number, I think it's 2-on-1 or something. They can call up. And there's a place called Love Inc. and several other places they can help people make contact with. Because I, I know what it's like. I, I literally sat on the pipe and the guy couldn't turn off my water. As you can imagine the picture of me being quite pregnant, to say the least. A lot of water-related charges, not the water itself, but other charges. Got to say they're related to water because what happens to the water after we use it? Goes down the sewer. We're paying a lot on our property taxes, we're paying a lot on the water bill for sanitary. Those rates have gone up. Of course, everybody's probably got the NIPSCO bill and see that NIPSCO was so kind enough to jack our rates up too. And people are senior citizens on fixed incomes. It's not easy for them because I'm in that boat right now. And I still have the medical bills still coming in from my husband, my late husband. And it's rough out there. A few dollars a month doesn't seem like much, but the senior citizens are only going to get like a 1.3% rate. That's like a dollar 30 cents per 100, basically. And of course, the Medicare is going to go up and that's going to wipe that out. A lot of us don't know where to cut. I, I did have my home phone yank, which I'm glad anyway because I was so tired of those stupid solicitors calling from India in the middle of the night. But it's like, where do you cut? I don't have cable. I, I pay $10 a month for my internet. I got bottom-of-the-line internet and I got a bottom-of-the-line computer, two doesn't work half the time. But it's like, where are we going to cut? It's really hard for us, very, very hard. I'm in the boat, a lot of people out there are. I, I personally, I do not get a pension. I was off too much because I had kids with medical problems. So I never accrued enough time in to, I almost got time in one place to get a pension. So I'm really depending on my social security check. It's very rough. And that should be taken into consideration. Hammond doesn't have a program to help people pay a bill. You don't pay your water bill, you're going to get it shut off. And then that's the bottom line. That is, that's a business. And there is no charity in it. And I would think more than 1% of the residents in Hammond right now are having a hard time with their bills because with this COVID and everything else that's going on, the economy's taking a nosedive and everything's crazy. There's a lot of people that are having a hard time paying their bills, not just their water bill, but everything else. You know, look at the long lines you see on TV, the people at food pantries. It's really sad out there. And as for our water situation in Hammond, maybe a little bit of an increase. But you got to take into consideration, I mean, the city of Hammond is getting a lot of money in from the communities in Illinois. I know that money does go to the city and the city gives the water department a piece of it. And all the money, I guess that's collected from what I understand. I, I'm not a accountant or whatever, like the gentleman from Whiting, he's good, he's really good. But I, I really, I, I think something can be done. I don't think, I don't feel bad for the city on repairing the water tower, okay? If you're getting a piece of the pie, you should help a little bit doing the dishes, okay? That's the way to look at it on that. That's the way I, my take on it anyway. Seeing the numbers, gentlemen from Whiting, and by the way, my daughter's an accountant and a financial analyst for a Fortune 500 company. And she does that number crunching and drives the rest of us crazy. From what I, I, I see the numbers here, it doesn't have to go up as high as what is projected or expected or wanted. Because the profit margin is going to be really, really high. I mean, everybody's allowed to make a profit, you know, a little bit. All these communities out here, they're buying water from Hammond. They're allowed to make a little bit of a profit because they got infrastructure they got to keep going to, and I understand that. You know, but I think this increase is a little bit like out of hand. Not, not a little bit out of hand, I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I say you got to factor in all accounts over here. The city does have revenue coming in from the Illinois communities. That's going right to the city and the water department gets a little cut. The water department does have money coming in, they might be operating a deficit. Maybe the city should give some more of that money to the water department. And I think the city also should fix the water tower. And if something else goes wrong, yeah, you got to fix it. You know, I mean, I got stuff on my house I got to fix too, and I hate it, but away it goes. Try replacing a water heater, they're not cheap. But I really think this increase is not warranted. It, it should be maybe just a little bit, but this is, this is crazy. I mean, it's like, what, 44 cents? And now it's going to like 2 something, 230 something? Oh, that, that's just way, 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 way too much. I, I think this needs to be over, looked over a lot better. And I think something should be done about this. And the people are in squeeze play and they don't need this. The communities, I'm sure, are going, oh my gosh, because everybody's hurt because of COVID. Something better got to, I mean, you got to think of something better than this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lasik. I appreciate her point of view as a Hammond resident, nice to see her here. I'd like to point out that I think we're unique. When I say we, City Hammond has a program that's funded through gaming revenues that you just approved in the budget for next year. We've been doing it every year for the last 17 years. We send a $500 check to all seniors that meet qualified conditions, I imagine. Ms. Lasik's home may be one of them that received the $500 check. It's presumably for paying property taxes and paying for increased expenses like this proposed water rate increase. I could tell you that those $500 checks are costly, cost a million dollars a year to, to run that program. We've been doing it every year. And hopefully, you know, obviously with Ms. Lasik's home and the loss of her husband, God forbid, you know, you know, it's good to see you here, Ms. Lasik, and as a Hammond resident. And hopefully you're a part of that program so that it can help you meet some of these higher expenses. So thank you for being here.
Does anyone else care to speak?
Mr. President? I do.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, uh, I, I agree with Mary Ellen about the amount of the bump. But more, again, what I'm worried about is, is the, for the, you know, no, nobody in Hammond, at least the citizens that I know, perhaps you guys too on the, in, in the council. Because it's only, we've only been aware of what goes on the water department other than getting our water and paying our bill since maybe last May, when we came out from under the jurisdiction of the IURC. Something that I found and still find a very, uh, very undermining move in terms of, for example, what's going on here. I, I do not believe that $1.90 is needed. I, indeed, I cite to a water department's minutes going back to, let's see here, June 25th, where a study was commissioned, a 30 to 45 day study with the increase to see if we could possibly go to $1.12 per 1,000 gallons. That looks more aspirational than anything else. So I don't know where this $1.90 came from. And I find very, very disturbing that no mention is made of how much the city of Hammond, being a wholesale seller, will they be paying the $1.90 per 1,000 gallons too? Like the other cities and towns? Or are they getting a pass on this? So I mean, I'm looking at these articles dated October 15th, I believe it is, from the Times. And the mayor refers to the water situation as a diamond. And I don't know if it's a diamond in the rock or a diamond that's polished. But I guess it depends on, you know, how much the city itself, as a broker or a contractor, I guess, is selling water. In addition, given our reliance over the, I don't know how many decades with the IURC and the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, I think that's what it is, OUCC, we've never had to delve into this. And, you know, this is normally left to the pros from Dover, down, you know, downstate and all that. And you have, where you had expert opinion, you had expertise that was readily available to protect citizens. Now we're out here, you know, expected to somehow resist or somehow interact critically or otherwise and mount somehow, I don't know, some sort of, of campaign or plan or alternate, uh, 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 position or perspective as to the, the amount that's being raised. I find, uh, uh, let's see here, I find that what's been going, I'm asking, I'm asking myself, what's been going on for the past 17 years, as Mayor McDermott states? 17 years, and who knows how long before that? And now suddenly, wham, he wants to make it all due now. It's almost as if, you know, due to, due to inaction, maybe neglect, mismanagement, suddenly, oh, you know, he, a necessity has risen. We, we need, we need, we're in a dire need apparently for, for infrastructural improvements, upgrades, yada, yada, yada. And we need it now. But this necessity, does it make for reasonability pursuant to the statute? I don't think so. That's what scares me. What scares me is the potential for litigation. And then we're going to end up perhaps, you know, back to, uh, some sort of compromise. And I, I just don't like the approach taken by the mayor. I mean, it's, it's, it's identical to what he did with the sanitary district. He just started unilaterally laying out, this is what I want. And if you don't like it, well, take it to court. You know, I mean, it, it's the same thing. And I'm leery of it, I'm very leery of it. And I wish I wasn't, but I'm not, I'm not happy about it at all. I think $1.90 is extensive. Granted, maybe it won't cost that much based on $5,000 a month. But you know, that's, that's, and then there's another thing. Is there any new debt or any new bonds contemplated? I haven't heard a word. I haven't heard a word. I mean, you know, the $1.90 has got to cover something. Somebody, there's money coming in. I can't believe all these communities, what is it, seven in, seven in Illinois, four or five in Indiana, that even at 44 cents, that there isn't enough money? And if you go to a buck 12, that's 200%. That, that's not going to be enough to cover all the financial needs? I'm sorry, I, I don't buy it, I don't buy it. And, uh, you know, it, it just doesn't add up to me. There's more than enough money in it. So I'm, I'm still not, I'm still wondering how the $1.90, 210, 230 is justified. We keep hearing the mantra in the city of Hammond about how we're the lowest rate in the world, as if that's a blank check, an invitation, well, let's just start bumping. Let's bump, let's bump. And therefore, all the benefits we get for living in the city of Hammond, in addition to the clawback against our so-called tax breaks, the 1, 2, 3 tax reform, are all going up in smoke. It costs you what, $25 now to get an accident report? I, I just don't know how, how we, the citizens, are going to benefit from this. So I'm worried about the reasonability. I don't think the necessity due to neglect and inaction over the years, especially the past 17 years, now suddenly it's reasonable simply because it's so cheap. I, I don't, I don't know these distinctions, how they will play in a court of law because it's one thing to talk in a sense commonsensically about it. But when you, once you get there and you start making these fine technical distinctions pursuant to the law and the criteria apply in the statutes, especially when they use the term, you know, what's, what's it in? I, I guess it's, uh, uh, 8, 1.53, I guess it's 8, subsection 8. And they talk about the cities are allowed to raise the rates or the utilities are allowed to raise the rates sufficient to pay for debt service, upgrades, maintenance, yada, yada, yada. And they can have a little bit of, they can have a reasonable return on, on, on their, I guess, the, the, from their revenue. Some, or a reasonable profit. But I don't know. When you get, start, when you start getting into that language and you start getting into what that represents, I am not at all confident that if we are sued, that Hammond will prevail. The mayor, I, I think, puts forth, granted, he's going to put forth a positive picture, but since he's the main advocate of this, and he, as he was the main advocate before with the sanitary district, I don't trust it. And I wish, and I don't believe the city council has done its due diligence. And if it has, it certainly hasn't disclosed it in these meetings. Because I did some due diligence. The mayor was talking, for example, and I just say as an example, he kept touting this idea that there was a study done in 2017, 2018. Well, I called the IURC, IURC twice. I talked to the OUCC. Nobody knows of any, of any such study done, that revealed, a, a rate study. So the only study I followed was done by Carl Sender, which mayor, which may have been adopted by somebody, I don't know. I, I just, I, I called and there was no paperwork. And so, uh, and then with respect to the, that way, he, he links it to the bond that was put out in 2017 for 7.5 million. Well, when you read the, when you read the, the transcript of Carl Sender's statement before the IURC, he says, we don't contemplate having to raise any money. Well, then the next thing you know, within what, six months, something like that, we're out from under the IURC. And I'm wondering if there was a shell game going on. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm imputing some not-so-savory motives, maybe a little bit, maybe I'm a little angry. And I apologize, I don't know, I'm just speculating. And I don't like what I'm speculating about. I don't have the confidence in it. And that's what I'm worried about there. We're going to get stuck with a bunch of litigation bills, you know, half a million bucks, depending on how it breaks, if it breaks, if it breaks. You know, I'm hoping that, you know, because I don't see the mayor willing to compromise on the rates. He's only compromised on the schedule ramp up. And I'm wondering, why is the mayor advocating on behalf of the, uh, leading the advocacy of this hike? It's the water department, they're an independent corporation. How is it that the, the city, I mean, what's the city, in a sense, got to do with this? They're an independent corporation and I haven't heard anything. I heard a little bit from Shawna, Shawna Levinson, their attorney. But, you know, where's, where's Eddie Cruzner? Where's Lendy? Where, where are these people? Let's, let's hear it. But nothing. So I'm sorry, I just don't have the same confidence that many do about this. And I'm sorry that I don't. So that's my peace of mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Apology accepted.
I'd like to correct George. First off, the main advocate for the Hammond sanitary district rate increase. George is too smart to say that publicly because he knows damn well the reason that the sanitary district rates were raised had nothing to do with Mayor McDermott. It had to do with this thing called the federal government and mandates that come down from the federal government. And I didn't realize that we were able to negotiate when the federal government and the Department of Justice are threatening to sue you. when the federal government and the Department of Justice are threatening to sue you over water that we take from a lot of the communities in here right now, funny enough. And they say, this is what you have to do. I guess we could say no, George. But you get to sit there and whiting and not go to jail, and I'm the one that has to face the Department of Justice. Why am I up here advocating? Because I'm the mayor. That's why I'm up here advocating. I'm not the kind of guy that's going to shirk off responsibility to one of my lawyers, have him come up here and take the arrows. This is what you elected me for. We have the cheapest water rates in the state of Indiana, according to the AIM study, excuse me, the AIM study that was done in May of twenty nineteen. If we raise our rates, like we're talking about, we'll still be the cheapest in the state of Indiana, even if you raise the rates. I guess I don't yell loud enough, so I'm going to try it George's way. I think it's extensive. Well, according to that study, we're going to be the cheapest in the state of Indiana, even if we raise the rates. We're way cheaper than anybody right now. So even though you feel that way, George, doesn't mean, because you say it in a loud volume, that it's actually true. Litigation bills are going to follow. That's possible. Litigation bills followed the Chicago Hates litigation. And we spent money defending ourselves in court, and we won. And as a result of spending litigation money, we end up with millions and millions of dollars extra every year. It's not an evil thing, litigation bills, oh my God! Litigation bills are going to follow. Yeah, they probably will, George, and we will win, okay?
Right.
Oh, it was real shady how we pulled out of the I U R C. Yeah, they did it in twenty eighteen. They pulled out of the I U R C, and here we are. Did you realize that eighty-five percent of the public utilities in Indiana have withdrawn from the I U R C? Which is why we also withdrew from the I U R C. We're literally one of the last utilities in the state of Indiana that had to go through this cumbersome process of the I U R C. That's why we withdrew from the I U R C. And then he took a dig at me, insinuating that I'm a crappy mayor. Seventeen years of inaction, seventeen years of doing nothing. Doesn't mean, because we haven't been using the water department to pay for water infrastructure, that there was no infrastructure going on. It was going on through casino gaming. It was going on, Councilman Warple's fifth district gave me money, Councilman Torres' second district gave me money, were being spent on water projects that should have been spent by the Hammond Water Utility, but they couldn't because they have no money. There's answers to all this, George, but just keep yelling. Maybe the truth will come out eventually.
Can I respond?
No. Does anybody else wish to speak? Does anybody else wish to speak? Seeing nobody else wish to speak, I want to thank everybody for being respectful up until here. But other than that, thank you all. Public meeting is closed. Would anyone like a five-minute break to use the washroom before we take the consideration you want to keep going?
It's up to you. I'm okay.
Is everybody all right?
Yes.
Okay, consideration of the ordinance, twenty twenty-five, Clerk Golick.
Ordinance number dash twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending the schedule of rates and charges for water services furnished by the Hammond Water Works Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Spitali for final passage and adoption of twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move to amend this ordinance, twenty twenty-five, and delete the following language from the bottom of Exhibit A. I'd like to delete the words metered rates will increase three percent annually on an annual basis effective January first, twenty twenty-four. And that is leading that statement.
Motion's been made to amend ordinance twenty twenty-five to delete the line, metered rates will increase three percent automatically on annual basis effective January first, twenty twenty-four. The base charge will not increase automatically on an annual basis. The motion was made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Listening to all of the discussion this evening, I would like to say to our residents who are concerned about the increase, we have all been there. We have all been there with the pink envelope from the water department and the pink envelope from NIPSCO. And you need gas in the car to get to work, and you got to pay the babysitter. We've all been there. This is not an exorbitant increase. From nineteen eighty-five, I think we should, I personally am grateful that we haven't had an increase since nineteen eighty-five. From my perspective, when, and I had heard this before, but when Jaime got up here and said that some of our infrastructure has an eighteen ninety date on it, let's see, who lives in a house that was built in eighteen ninety? And what kind of repairs have, have we had to make to that home? To me, that eighteen ninety date is very frightening. Because the repercussions of a malfunction, we're not going to have to worry about paying a water bill because we won't get any water. That becomes a matter of health and safety. This is, this is not an easy decision. On one hand, it's very difficult. On the other hand, it's very easy. Because it's been so long since we had an increase. But for our residents, they need to know that the city of Hammond Water Department is willing to work with you if you find yourself in a position that you cannot pay your bill. I know this. I know this for a fact. Sometimes we just have to bite the bullet and make the phone call if we find ourselves in that position. And that's all that I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Unless I heard it wrong, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed on the amendment. Now on twenty twenty-five as amended. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, we've heard a ton of information tonight. And I don't know about my colleagues, but I would just like a bit more time to crunch some numbers, speak with the water department, speak with our legal department. And so I would actually like to make a motion that we hold off the vote until our next scheduled meeting, which is next Monday, if possible.
Second.
Are you asking for it to be tabled?
Not tabled, just postponing until Monday.
The motion's been made and it's been put on the floor and seconded. It's either got to, motion's got to be made to table, or it's being considered tonight.
I don't know if we need to check with Attorney Berger, but I think under Roberts' rules of orders, we have the power to just postpone to a specific date instead of tabling it all together.
There is a motion to postpone the date definitely, which is my understanding of his motion. So it's a proper motion.
Okay, a proper, okay, the motion's been made to postpone twenty twenty-five until next Monday night, which would be the twenty-third, right?
Correct.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vanez.
No.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Rakos.
No.
Warple.
No. Let the record show, was it six? Let the record show, seven in favor. I'm sorry, six in favor, three opposed. I'm sorry, three in favor, six opposed. Now. Clerk, is there any further discussion on twenty twenty-five as amended?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman, Councilman Kalwinski.
I've been a councilman for seventeen years, and almost from the beginning of time in that chair, I had been asking for help from the water department and sanitary when reconstructing underground on streets in the first district. Had that been in place that many years ago, I'm certain I would get twice as many streets done as I have gotten done because of the savings of not having to do, use gaming dollars for underground work. So this increase, my understanding is that this increase will allow for infrastructure work as well as filtration plant work, as well as transmission lines and pump stations, all of which are in terrible need. And I continue to have those needs underground in the streets in the first district, as there are some of the oldest streets there in the city. So I welcome the potential to have more dollars coming into the water department to be used by them, their dollars, for infrastructure work throughout the city. And I see the need for expansion for city water services and filtration plant improvements, and potentially a new filtration plant if needed. I don't know how we can to improve the bonding capacity of the filtration or the water department. I think we have to do an increase to be able to put forward those, those things in motion. So I just wanted to give some perspective from all my years in office that I welcome not having to use as many gaming dollars for underground work and that revenue will come in through the water department to do those improvements so that when we do the improvements on top of the streets, that they will not be busted up immediately because they need infrastructure work underneath. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I want to echo Councilman Kalwinski's comments regarding understanding the need for the increase. And I think a lot of people have expressed their thoughts around the fact that it's been over thirty years that we haven't had an increase. And even if we had been keeping up with inflation, we wouldn't be in this situation right now. And so I definitely understand the need for infrastructure repairs. It's something that we've been talking about for a while. And I know this year, given COVID and all the setbacks that we've had with regarding our gaming funds, we've had to put things on pause. And so we, I definitely understand the need for the increase. But I would be remiss if I didn't share that I've heard from a good amount of my residents that they are fearful for the increase. And I understand, I understand how. I understand that, given COVID, a lot of people have been laid off. People have tried to find or had to find part-time work that is paying minimum wage. And so they've had to make cuts. And this is definitely an area that if, you know, I've advocated that if we could slow down the total increase, and I would be behind that. I understand that we have to get out in front of these repairs. So I do understand that that money has to come from somewhere. But with that being said, I really wish we could have come to some understanding as a council of slowing this down so that it wouldn't hit some residents as hard as it might. Even if it, you know, even if like somebody like me who can afford the increase. But I know that there are people in my district that just can't. And whether we agree with that or not, whether we want to place blame on the situations that some of those people find themselves in, like that's not my place, and I don't think that's other residents' place or other council members' place, but it's just the fact that that's something that we just have to deal with. And so I do understand that the mayor has called out that he is willing to place more resources within the water department to figure out ways that we can have more supports for families who are finding hard times and being placed on hardships when it comes to their water bills. And so I, looking forward to working with him and the rest of the city council and the water department to figure out what we can do to support those families. Because no matter what, we are going to see more and more families have those issues. Like I said, I understand the increase. And I also understand outside of what we're voting on tonight, that other communities will be, will be hit with this too. As someone who was elected by residents within the third district, those are the people that I'm responsible to. Those are the people that, that put me in office and will hold me accountable. And that's why I initially wanted to postpone this vote until next Monday, to do some more research, to dive more into some of the numbers and statistics that we heard tonight. But seeing that we won't do so, I'm ready to vote with my peers and see where this lands. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Hearing from Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler about the same issue. And, you know, I think there's a lot of merit in what they're bringing up. The Hammond Water Board is composed of five members appointed by the mayor. They have to be appointed in a bipartisan fashion, but they're ultimately, you know, they're appointed by the mayor. And then it runs on its own from there. They hire their own CEO. And I do plan to speak with each of the five appointees that I have to that. And I will have them report back to the Hammond Council very soon, before the rate increase goes into effect, if it's approved, about actions we could take to follow up on these recommendations coming from Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler about some type of program that could help the Hammond homeowners that are hit hard by this rate increase and can't afford the pay increase. So I will have the CEO of the Hammond Water Company report back to the council before the end of the year with their new plan to try to, in fact, working with Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler to try to work together and come up with some type of program that's even better than the one we have now. Maybe there's some type of loss account or some type of aid that we could render in situations like that. But I think it's a great recommendation. And obviously, you know, for people in Hammond that are finding themselves down and out, and they're having trouble paying their water bill, I'm sure they're also having trouble paying their NIPSCO and their property tax bill and things of that nature. But if we could provide a little bit of relief on the water side, I think that that's something we should try to do, especially in light of what we're going through as a country and the magnitude of the jump. So I think both of them bring up a good point. And I promise you that Mark McLaughlin, who's here listening to me now, will report back before the end of the year on a program that we could implement in the Hammond Water Company to help with that, if that's okay with you two.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor, for those comments. It is definitely noted and appreciated. And that's the one thing we're just trying to do. We're just trying to look out for our residents. They did elect us. And for me, it's at large, I'm hearing from different residents across the spectrum, and making sure that their, their needs are totally met. When we're talking about increases, yes, we can say it's a cup of coffee. But maybe they can't even afford that Starbucks coffee already. So looking into those different things and those different plans, we're not saying that the infrastructure does not need to be done. we're not saying that the infrastructure does not need to be done. Half of this stuff is just, it's either older than us. But when the rate increase, when we talk about the rate increase, it's only a little bit younger than us, uh, with that rate increase that's happened. So we know that it needs to happen. Um, we, I know for me, I wish it would have happened sooner than now. Um, but it does make it extremely hard to vote tonight, um, knowing, um, what it's going to do. But also knowing, like Jennifer has said, that we're teeter tottering. We know that it's going to be a struggle, but at the same time, it's an easy but hard vote because we know that infrastructure definitely needs to be done in our city to make sure things don't go wrong.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
You have my word. This is, I have a lot of homework assignments. If this ordinance passes, I have to meet with all the customer communities and hopefully come up with some type of ramp up resolution that's satisfactory to both parties. And I commit to our customer communities right now that we will follow the contract and we will try to negotiate acceptable terms to both parties. And I promise Councilwoman Ty, uh, Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler, I'm going to work with the Hammond Water Company to come up with a better system for the residents that are having trouble paying their bills. I think your concerns are well warranted.
Mayor, just a quick question. Yes, sir. As far as contracts go of any kind, that's an executive, correct?
Also, Councilman, I appreciate you asking. These are decades-long contracts, you know, twenty years, thirty-year contracts. And, you know, so they're hard to break. In fact, if you, I know most people in here are familiar, we had a major disagreement when it came to wastewater with a lot of the same communities that are in here right now, and it ended up in court when we litigated that. Um, these are long-term contracts, obviously. If you're going to hook up water to a community, it can't be a year-to-year thing. Outside of Griffith. Griffith does not have an active contract right now with the Hammond Water Company. And quite frankly, they could walk if they want. Maybe they get a better offer for water from another source. They could literally walk away with no breach of agreement with the city Hammond right now. So, but I think the Councilwoman and the Councilman's concerns are well warranted. It's obviously very important to them. And regardless of how the vote turns out tonight, I plan to follow that up with the Hammond Water Company in the next couple of weeks. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golic roll call.
Alexander. Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries, eight in favor, one opposed. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.